Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
I want to thank each of you for coming tonight. I know you have busy schedules, but this is an important meeting. As you're well aware, Linden got hit pretty hard with Superstorm Sandy, as has the state of New Jersey been hit hard also. And FEMA is coming out shortly with new flood maps. Right now, they're unofficial, but they will be designated official in the future. And because of that, it's going to impact about another 90 homes in the city of Linden in the flood zone. And I know there's a lot of rumors going around and a lot of misinformation and a lot of questions, such as I have, concerning the impact that these new flood maps are going to have on our residents, on the banking industry, and on the insurance industry. FEMA's been kind enough to send an army, and I mean literally, an army of people here, to answer all your questions. What are we going to do is have FEMA discuss all the issues at this meeting, but we are not taking questions and answers from the audience. Instead, you have any questions and answers, FEMA will be here the whole night long if you want them to, and have one-on-one with each individual that has a question so that they give you a direct answer. I also have, from the city of Linden, an insurance representative from Figleaf, which will answer some questions pertaining to insurance with the new flood zone maps. And I also have, from Sovereign Bank, Paul Greslak, who will talk to you about any of the issues concerning mortgages or banking with the new regulations that are going to be coming out. I'd just like to take this opportunity at this time to let you know that Freeholder Houdak, who's to my left, from Union County, is here also to assist us with Councilman Sheehy further to my left and Councilman Bob Sadowski. I'm also waiting, and they will be arriving shortly, State Senator Scatary and Assemblywoman Stender, who's also concerned about what these new flood maps are going to mean to the people in their districts. So without further ado, what I would like to do now is introduce Tom Song from FEMA to take over and start explaining the different functions that are going to be occurring with these new flood maps and the new flood zones. Tom?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting us to this event. And thank you all for taking the time out tonight to come here and hear us speak about our programs. Now, before I begin, I just want Madeline from our Disability Integration Office to say a couple words.
Thank you, Tom, and thank you, Mayor, for inviting us here to Linden. My name is Madeline Goldfarb, and I am from the group of Disability Integration Advisors. And what we do is ensure equal access to all of FEMA programs to individuals with disabilities. So this evening, there are many communication tools that we provide, but this evening, one of the tools that we are providing is called CART. And if you'll notice, the screen behind us here and in front of you, it is capturing everything that is being said. It is not exactly verbatim. There may be a word or a name that is not captured exactly as it is intended, but it will give you a transcript at the end of the presentation. And you will be able to get that transcript from the mayor's office. It will probably take a day or two before that arrives at the mayor's office, but afterwards you can certainly call the mayor's office to receive a transcript of everything that is being said. And it will also be put up on the mayor's website as well. I also have some of our materials in large print and in Braille, so please do seek me out if you think that would be helpful for anyone. And if you know of anyone with a disability who may have some need for our office, please do seek me out and let me know. And I thank you again so much for attending.
Thank you, Madeline. Let me begin by just introducing the people in the dais from FEMA. To the right of me, we have Deborah Parker, and she will be talking about floodplain management and insurance. Next to her, we have Barbara Edwards. She is from Individual Assistance. And finally, we have someone who's not part of FEMA, but is part of the Small Business Administration, or the SBA. And we often invite them to come with us because they have programs and services that many people may not have heard of or know about, and they're a really nice complementary piece to the recovery and rebuilding efforts that many of you impacted residents are undergoing. And that would be Jessica Paul. My name again is Thomas Song. I do work at FEMA, and I am from Region Two. And what that means is that Region Two, New Jersey is part of Region Two, and that I am actually a local asset. I live in New York, I work in New York, and before Sandy, I was here helping the state of New Jersey, the counties, and the municipalities, and residents like yourself. I am part of a team that will be here long after the recovery efforts of Sandy are done to help, again, the county and municipalities, like the city of Linden. At FEMA, I work in the mitigation division, and that often is not truly, people don't really understand what we do. And so, let me just tell you, in a nutshell, what we try to do is, we try to help communities become more hazards resilient. And in this particular case, we're talking about flooding events. And so, we try to help communities become more flood-proof or flood-resilient so that physically your structures can withstand a flooding event. And we also are concerned that people are properly insured so that if they are impacted by a flood, they would have some financial resource to help them with their recovery and rebuilding efforts. The first thing about mitigation is knowing what your risk is. And back in 2008, FEMA got the go-ahead and the money to do an updated coastal study for the state of New Jersey, the city of New York, and parts of Long Island. Now, many of the flood studies that were done prior to this were outdated. In fact, some of them were over 25 years old. So part of this new study is what we call a flood insurance study, or an FIS. And one of the outputs of this FIS is a flood map, or what we would refer to as a firm, a flood insurance rate map. Now, the project began in 2008 and was slated to be done and completed by the summer of 2013, and we're talking about a couple months from now. Prior to the study being completed, Superstorm Sandy came into our area, and we know the severe impact it had on many of the communities along the Jersey Shore. The study itself was not ready to be distributed, but there were impacted residents who needed to rebuild and who needed to have as much information concerning their flood risk, and they needed to have it immediately. What that means is that if you were impacted and you were rebuilding, we did not want you to rebuild to the old standard, because if you did, you would be susceptible to the same flooding event like what occurred with Sandy. So FEMA decided to create, to give out the best information that we possibly can with the limited time that we had. So we had to do a quicker calculation with the information that we had on the study. And part of that calculation, because of the time constraint, we had to build it in a cushion. In other words, we wanted to kind of be more conservative with the risk or overstate the risk so that if you needed the information for your rebuilding decision-making, that the information we give you would, if anything, if nothing else, overshoot your risk. An example would be, if in the advisory maps, we say that your flood risk is 10 feet, and you build to 10 feet, and come the completion of that study, it shows that your actual risk is nine feet, and so you have overbuilt by a foot, well, we feel that you're safer and that because of the lesser flood risk, your insurance premiums would also reflect that, meaning that your flood insurance would be lower. So that is kind of the stance we took, and that is kind of the stance that the governor, Governor Christie, has taken with his emergency declaration of using, of adopting the advisory map statewide, plus a foot. Now, the advisory maps were distributed, again, for people who were in the position where they needed to make the decisions, and they needed to make the decisions immediately. The advisory maps are just that, advisory in nature, and so they have no implications on your insurance. Again, whatever the advisory map show will not change your insurance risk. What they do show is basically a preview into what to expect with the new flood maps that are being produced right now. And what we are seeing across New Jersey is that flood risk has gone up throughout the state of New Jersey. So the flood insurance study that I was referring to is supposed to be completed by the summer of 2013, in a couple months. When it is completed, we will be producing these firms or these flood insurance rate maps, and we will be showing, we will distribute that to the county and to the municipality for review. When the maps are produced and distributed, they will be coming out in preliminary form. These maps will show a truer risk in your area and will also impact your insurance. This is what we call a regulatory product. And because it is a regulatory product, it has to go through an extensive review process. So what we will do is, we'll produce the firms or the flood maps in preliminary form for your review and for comment, and that will happen in the next couple months. The review process can take anywhere from 18 to 24 months, so we're talking about two years. And in that two-year time, once those flood maps are adopted, they will affect your insurance. So all your insurance ratings will be based off the new firm or the flood insurance rate map. Again, the advisory maps were created for those people who needed to make the decisions now, and they are only meant to be advisory in nature. The significance of those advisory maps, besides guiding those residents who needed to make the decisions immediately, also is related to where federal monies go. Now, I'm going to touch a little bit upon some of the insurance part of the program. I don't know if you have heard of ICC or the increased cost of compliance, the up-to $30,000 that is available for those residents that we considered substantially damaged. And substantially damaged is a technical term, which means that 50% of your structure, not your property, but your actual building structure, was impacted or was lost. That determination is made by your local floodplain administrator. It is done on a local level. If that determination is made on your structure, you can then take that letter, sorry, a letter will be sent to you, and you can take that letter to the insurance company and file an additional claim and receive up to $30,000 in additional monies. But that money has to be used for you to rebuild your home, and it has to comply with the best available data. And what we mean by that is, it has to comply with at least the advisory maps, if not a more stringent or a higher standard if it's set by your municipality or by the state. Also, if you receive any federal grant monies, that too, all those monies must be applied towards rebuilding and being in compliance with the best available data. And so, again, this is where the advisory maps will come into play again. If you are a resident that was impacted, but not severely enough to be considered substantially damaged, or that you had minor repairs to do, these advisory maps, again, will just show you a preview of what to expect, but are not forcing you to do any, for any compliance or to do anything to your home. A lot of questions we get are that residents will ask us if FEMA is requiring people to elevate their house. Legally, we cannot make you do anything to your home unless, A, you receive federal monies, or if you are, if it is a new construction, if there is a new construction building, and if it is a new construction, well, we want those new buildings to be built at the highest level, highest standard available so that they would not be susceptible to these flooding events. We created a website, in case anybody is interested in learning more about these events or more about our programs, and the website is www dot region, the number two, coastal dot com. And, you know, we'll have cards to distribute, so if you don't want to, if you don't have a pen or you don't want to write this down, we will give you this information so that you can take that home with you. Again, it's region, the number two, coastal dot com. And now, on that website, we have information about our programs, about floods, and we have a tab at the very end that says, that's for, to contact us. In that tab, if you have any questions that are not answered tonight, or if any questions come up, or you have a friend or a neighbor that has a question, please have them use that site and use that tab to write us a question. From what I have heard, the turnaround time has been 24 to 48 hours, so you will get an answer, and hopefully you'll get an answer very soon. Another development with these advisory maps are the flood zones. And I know that if you've been reading the paper, there's been a lot of talk about these flood zones. So let me just go over what these flood zones mean. Zone A means that you are located within a 1% or the 100-year floodplain. If you are in a zone A and you have a mortgage that has some kind of federal interest, you would be required to get flood insurance. The zone V, or short for velocity, means that you are also in the 1% or the 100-year floodplain, but that you are also susceptible to wave action of at least three feet. And now, science has shown that waves that are three feet or bigger do pose a more significant threat to structures and cause more damage than just plain rising water. V zones also will have a higher insurance risk associated with that and also a higher premium. And now, there is the zone X, which is the .2 or the 500-year floodplain. Now, those areas are areas that are susceptible to rising waters in a more extreme event. If you are in a zone X, you would not be required to get flood insurance, but we would strongly recommend it because, again, if there is an extreme event that occurs, you are susceptible to being impacted by that flood. And then, the zone X, again, because it is such less, so low risk, the premiums will usually reflect that, and that could be anywhere from $400 to $500 a year. Something new that was developed from Katrina with these advisory maps and that are now being applied for New Jersey is the new coastal A zone. Now, we all know that when a wave is generated, that it just doesn't, a three-foot wave just doesn't end, and that it will diminish in height and in magnitude. The coastal A zones are the zones, are the areas that are in the 1% or the 100-year floodplain, and that are also susceptible to wave action of a foot and a half to three feet. And again, science has shown that while not as dangerous as a three-foot or greater wave, that it does pose more of a threat and cause more damage than just plain rising water. If you are in a coastal A zone, we strongly recommend that if you are rebuilding or you're building a new structure, that you adhere to the coastal construction standards to keep your building safer. Let's see. Well, and so, I think I pretty much touched upon the more frequently asked questions and the hot topics. I am here with the team, and we are located right here on my right with the ABFE sign. We have internet connectivity, and that we can help you determine what your advisory zones and your elevations are if you gave us your address. And I will also be here, and my team will be here, to answer any questions that you may have. Now, at this point...
Tom, let me just interrupt you. I want to just introduce to my left State Assemblywoman Linda Stender and to my left, to my rear, State Senator Nick Scatary. They've taken the time out of their busy schedule to be here to get the knowledge that we're all seeking on this new flood maps. Thank you, Tom.
Thank you very much, Mayor, and good evening, everybody, and members of council that are here, and members of FEMA. I, like all of you, I'm here trying to get the answers because we are being asked in our office and because of people, you know, myself and others that are, that want this information. And I want you to know that myself and Senator Scatary and Jerry Green, Assemblywoman Jerry Green, are also going to be working with Linden and trying to help you so that if you're trying to get answers that you're not, that you're having a difficult time with, please contact our offices. Our staff is here, so we're taking information so that we can stay in touch and send out a newsletter as the information becomes clearly available. It sounds tonight like, Tom, which I didn't meet you, but I was listening to you very closely, that your information was pretty clear. Still has questions, I think, that in terms of, for people who are seeking that money. And if this map isn't adopted and the money is available or isn't, and you decide to do it, are you going to be able to go and apply and retroactively get it? I mean, I hear that a lot. There's a lot of uncertainty, and as I believe we all feel and know, it's making for a lot of confusion and upheaval in people's lives. So I look forward to working with you and to serving the people here in Linden to try and help us all through this difficult time as we rebuild and move forward. Thank you.
Okay, well, thank you. And so, before I wrap, let me just wrap up my portion of the presentation. Again, the advisory maps are that, just that, advisory and have no insurance implications. They do act as somewhat of a preview window to see, to show you what the new maps may hold for this particular area. You won't know until those maps are rolled out. Those new firms or flood insurance rate maps in preliminary form will be distributed sometime in the next couple months to your county and to your municipality. I know this is a topic that will be in the forefront of a lot of people's minds so that when these maps do come out, I'm sure that you will be notified of this, and you will also have the ability to look at these maps and make your comments. The firms, again, the flood insurance rate maps, once they are adopted, and that can take anywhere from 18 to 24 months, will be your new official flood map, and those maps will determine what your flood risk is and will affect your insurance. So at this point, I'd like to hand this over to my colleague Deborah Parker, and she'll talk about floodplain management and insurance. Thank you.
Thanks, Tom. Thank you, Mayor, for inviting us over. My name is Deborah Parker. I'm from Region Four. I'm from Florida, and I came over to assist with the Hurricane Sandy event here in New Jersey. I do have, we'll have a desk set up out there where I can answer any questions that you have in regards to the flood insurance policy. Tom kind of explained to you ICC, and of course, we, I'm sure you, some of you have questions regarding the ICC, which is the increased cost compliance portion of your policy, which is built in the policy, its additional coverage is there that allows you to tap into that benefit up to $30,000 if your property is substantially damaged. I'll be happy to explain any of that for you if you're interested in that better at the table. Then we have a legislation, which is the Bigot Waters legislation that came aboard back July 6 of 2012, and that's involving the removal of the subsidies at this time. The subsidies and discounts on the policies itself, those are going away effective January of 2013. If you have any questions about that, I'll be able to help you. In addition to that, any concerns you have regarding the handling and filing of your floodplain status and how to proceed forward so that you can, you know, try to get your benefits paid to you that are due to you, or any responses you may have backed from your insurance company, I'll try to assist you with that. If there's a question that I cannot answer, you know, here, I will take it back and do the research for you. It may not, it may be a little longer than 24 hours for us to get back to you, but we definitely will get back to you with the, you know, expedited, in an expedited process, okay? And that's it. I'll see you outside.
Hi, I am Barbara Edwards from Seattle, Washington, so I'm on the other side of the U.S. from you, but I'm happy to be here. My group of wonderful ladies are outside this door and to the right. There's four of them there that are happy to look into your FEMA registration case and see if there's anything that you have questions on. One of the most common things that we'll hear from FEMA people, from, excuse me, applicants is FEMA denied me. And please, 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 don't ever be afraid to contact FEMA. Those denials can be as little as a social security number that's off. Ladies, you probably got your social security cards when you were single. Your social security card's name is going to be in that maiden name. That's a real, real common thing that we can fix in just a phone call, usually. FEMA has a lot of computerized items that go into the database, and one little thing can click it off and deny you. And please don't be afraid to come in. We work diligently with our disaster recovery centers and our helpline to help us get you the monies that are due you and to help you work through your claim. As of today, they have extended the registration period for individual assistance to April 1st. So if you or anyone you know has not been registered for FEMA for Hurricane Sandy damage, you have another month in order to do so. So please stop by and visit us when you have some time here this evening. We'll be real happy to go through and talk to you about everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, I'd like to introduce to my left State Senator Nicholas Scatary.
Thank you, Mayor. I'm just happy to be able to come tonight. My running mates, Jerry Green and Linda Stender, we served together in the state legislature and get some of the information that FEMA has regarding the flood maps. I mean, that's really the questions that we're getting in our office on a regular basis, is when are the maps going to be available? And I think some of that information's been given to us today. What implications is it going to have? And so, we're also trying to gather information, and we've been pressing for answers to as well as that. But I do want to congratulate and thank the mayor for the effort that he's given. I was with him hour after hour and on the phone with him regularly regarding the Sandy disaster when it happened, and I just want to thank him for his leadership when the disaster first hit. I mean, one of the things that we continuously got was, when are the lights going to come back on? What are we going to do about it? What can be done in the meantime? And that's when we really point to our leaders, and I want to thank him for stepping up and going out to the community when there was no phone service and there was no way to get in touch with people and basically going to each and every area of the city and meeting with people and trying to disseminate that information and being in touch with PSCNG each and every day. So I'm going to thank the mayor for that, and I pledge our support to him and to you as this process continues. So thank you very much, and I encourage you to call my office or Jerry or Linda's with any questions or any way that we can be helpful going forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. And now, I'd like to introduce State Assemblyman and Speaker Pro temp in our state legislature, Jerry Green.
Thank you very much, Mayor. First of all, I also would like to congratulate the city of Linden, especially Mayor Labanka, who from day one was on top of this issue. In fact, Linden was somewhat moving faster than anybody else in the state. Not only am I Speaker Pro temp of the New Jersey State Assembly, also I'm chairman of housing and local government, and all probability, just about all these issues will come through my committee. I'm currently working with the administration, Department of Community Affairs, to make sure when these federal dollars come in, that they don't wind up down the shore area, but they wind up in all parts of New Jersey. I was shocked when I, Linda and I met with the mayor to find out some of the damage that was done in Linden, especially the oil spill, things of that nature, and how you guys were able to come together and maximize the damage. We've still got a long way to go. Currently, I am in negotiation with the Department of Community Affairs to make sure cities like Linden... like Lyndon continuously get the support they need because of the fact that it's not going to be fair that the taxpayers here in the city has to pick up some costs that the government is basically prepared to help us out with. I know my first meeting with FEMA countywide, there were no intentions at all of having an office in Union County, and I was blessed to get an office in Plainfield. Eventually, with the mayor's support, we got an office here in Lyndon. So Plainfield and Lyndon was the only towns that really had physically somebody taking their complaints. And I think between the two was over six hundred complaints that was filed, and FEMA has done a great job in working towards that. Also, I want to congratulate that operation because of the fact they've been very helpful. But at the same time, if you, any of you have any kind of problems whatsoever, share with the mayor, and I will make sure that I have to do what I have to do in Trenton with the Department of Community Affairs because this thing is far from over. And we're hoping that towns like Lyndon, which people wouldn't realize had the type of damage that you did have because you're more like in central Jersey, but they don't realize that you're close to the shoreline, and you had a lot of damage that basically nobody was aware of until the mayor brought it to attention. So Mayor and also the council members, I want to congratulate you. You did a heck of a job because as Chairman of Local Government, I deal with all five-hundred-plus municipalities around the whole state. And let me tell you something, you got a first-class operation here in the City of Lyndon, and I'm so proud of our senator as well as my running mate. And whatever we can do, notify the mayor, and if he can't get it accomplished, working together with our senator, we will get it accomplished. So I'm glad to be here with you tonight because I'm so proud of the City of Lyndon. You're able to come together and do what I consider a major job in making sure that you didn't get more damage than what other municipalities received. So again, I'm happy to be here with you tonight, looking forward to working with you. Thank you.
Thank you, Assemblyman. And I just want to say one thing, whether it be Senator Scatary, Assemblywoman Stender, or Assemblyman Green, I did not have to call them. Immediately after Superstorm Sandy, they called my office and they said, "Mayor, what can we do for Lyndon?" And I just would like to thank all three of them for all the assistance they've given the City of Lyndon. And with that said, I'd like to turn it over to the SBA, Jessica, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for having us here this evening to discuss with you the recovery efforts of Hurricane Sandy. As Barbara mentioned a few minutes ago, the first step for survivors is to go ahead and register with FEMA. Once you've registered with FEMA, if you receive an application from the Small Business Administration, you should complete the application and return it, even if you don't own a small business. The Small Business Administration, in times of disaster, we offer low-interest disaster loans to homeowners, renters, and businesses of all sizes. In terms of what's available for homeowners, for homeowners, we offer up to two hundred thousand dollars to repair any structural damage that occurred as a result of the storm. We also offer up to forty thousand dollars to cover any personal property that was lost as a result of the storm. And for renters, we offer up to forty thousand dollars to cover personal property losses, which can also include the loss of an automobile. The interest rates for homeowners and renters, it's as low as 1.68 percent, and the term of the loan can be extended for up to thirty years. For businesses, we have two components to our business loans. The first is physical damage. That goes to repair, replace any disaster-damaged property. That would include real estate, inventory, assets. And then the second component to our business loan is economic injury, and that goes towards working capital for your business that may have had decreased traffic or may have had to close as a result of the storm. The interest rate for that, it's as low as 3 percent for nonprofits and as low as 4 percent for businesses. Again, up to a total of two million dollars is available for the business loan, and again, that term can be extended for up to thirty years. Once a loan is approved, you may be able to, there is additional, there are additional funds available to cover mitigation costs. So that would be improvements to the home that would help prevent the home from sustaining similar damage in a similar type of a storm. For mitigation, we can loan up to 20 percent of your total loss to go towards that damage. And if you have any questions on the loan themselves, on the mitigation portion of the loan, feel free to come up to me after this. I also have Louise Porter is here in the blue shirt will be in the back, and if you have any questions, feel free to come to speak to either one of us. Thank you.
Thank you, Jessica. Now we're going to hear from one of our local businesses, Figleaf Insurance, Brian Tomko. Brian, can you advise us on some of the issues that are going to impact the insurance industry with these flood maps?
Thank you very much, Mayor. Again, my name is Brian Tomko, and I own an insurance agency right across the street from City Hall. I am more suited to be on that side of the podium than this side of the podium as we share the same level of questions, frustrations, concern, and all of that. As an insurance agent, we're trying to be the best resource that we can on a local level for, you know, the area downtown, our clients, and really anybody who asks the question, what flood insurance is, why we need it, who makes us have it, I didn't know that I needed it, all of those things. So those are the questions that drew, that were drawn out earlier in the week in other meetings and prompted me to be at this meeting. We want to be the best resource for our clients and for anyone who has questions about flood insurance, what's covered and what's not. As everyone knows, and I'm sure the banking end of things is going to speak next, no one requires you to have flood insurance if you don't have a mortgage on your home. If you have a mortgage on your home, the mortgage company is going to require that you have flood insurance, provided you're in a flood zone. These flood maps firms that we heard about earlier change from time to time, usually many years, they don't change very frequently. They're infrequently changed, but they do change. People who weren't in a flood zone when they purchased their house may now, years later, be in a flood zone. What the projected cost impact is going to be on these changes is really what we're interested in. Eighteen to twenty-four months for these maps to be out leaves a little bit of a hole in the advisory that we can give clients as to what it's going to cost when it does finally come out and change, and that's something that we just don't have the answers for. But understanding what your flood insurance policies cover, what they don't cover, what level of coverage you need, that's something you need to speak to an agent about or if you're not going to speak to someone at FEMA. And there's a lot of local resources within the insurance industry in the town, and I advise all of you to talk to them and make myself available for you as well. So, thank you very much for having me here, Mayor.
Thank you, Brian. And lastly, from Sovereign Bank, Paul.
How's everybody this evening? My name is Paul Greslak. I work at the Sovereign Bank over in Lyndon, 236 West St. George. I'm representing Sovereign Bank tonight. And basically, when you reapply for a home equity loan or mortgage, it's in a flood zone, the bank puts flood insurance. The bank has experts in place that can help you in terms of what zone you're in and everything like that. So, basically, before we do anything, you have to have the flood insurance. The bank requires you to do that, and any other questions or concerns, I'll be available on the side here after this meeting so I can get into more detail with you. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Paul. Last speaker before we go into question and answer, and again, I want to remind you that the question and answer is going to be one-on-one. We'll be here all night to answer anybody's questions, but to me, that would be the most productive way to conduct this forum. So, once we're finished from the dais, FEMA will go over by the blue sign there, and you could start asking them whatever questions you want or anybody from the insurance or banking. But lastly, I'm going to introduce Councilman Jack Sheehy. Most of his, most of the damage done to the City of Lyndon was in his ward with the floods, and he sustained heavy damage to his home also. So Councilman Sheehy, your mic is yours.
Thank you. I can see the frustration on everybody's face here. Please, ask the questions. What was brought up here? Being on a flood map, we know we're on a flood map or you're parked right next to it. Ask the questions. We need the questions answered, like, should we fix our house? Should we move? Should we elevate our house? Should we spend more money in a house? Should I stop working on my house? You know, those are the questions we need to ask, but we have to do it in the proper forum to, here, it would totally get out of hand because of the frustration that's built through us that, you know, every time it rains, we're getting hit with this. So, please, I know it doesn't matter to us sitting here if we're in that flood map or not, we know we're in the flood map, that's why we're here. So please, patiently wait in line and ask the questions that you need answered because, you know, it's, we're taking a big hit down here, our livelihoods. You know, we want to know, do our homes have any value? You know, can we sell our homes? You know, we're not even going to be able to sell our homes. Those are the answers that we came here for. But in, you know, in an open forum like this, it would just really get out of hand. So please, you know, patiently wait in line and ask, get in the right line and ask the questions that you need to ask because we all have, you know, different questions. And to me, it's like, who got hit harder? Who got the worst? It's like a contest out here, you know, who, who, who got the worst damage for crying out loud? And, you know, we need answers, you know? Like I say, we all know we're in the flood map, that's why we're here. We, we need answers, and please, I'll say it again, patiently wait in line because I didn't want to give out the wrong answers. You know, who am I to advise somebody? I'm not knowledgeable what's going on, you know, and really, I should be on that side. So please, I ask again, be patient and wait in line and ask the questions. And like the lady said, if they don't have the answer, they will get back to you with the answer. And I appreciate everybody coming out here. I'm glad this room is full, and thank you very much, and God bless. I hope it works out for us, honestly. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Now we're going to end this session, and again, the FEMA team is going to break up into individuals, and you're welcome to wait and answer whatever question you have on your mind. I'm sure they'll answer it. So thank you for spending the time, and good evening, everyone.